Good evening. I would call our town meeting to order. Our town meeting being a continuation of the meeting held on May 20th with the business before us to complete action on the remaining articles, beginning with Article 19. However, as we are at a fairly new meeting, I would ask that we also begin again with a pledge and then I will review our protocols and policies. Thank you. All rise please with hats removed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In terms of egress, we have the two exits at the back of the hall and one on either side of the stage. In terms of our procedures and protocols, for discussion, all who wish to address the assembly must do so by going through the moderator. Please come forward to the microphone to be recognized and identify yourself, giving name and address, before succinctly expressing your views on the article in question. Respectfully, all discussion will be limited to the merits of the article, avoiding all personalities and issues that do not pertain directly to the article in question. For other than a voice vote, we will use our sort of orange voter registration cards. The front section to my left has been reserved for our non-voters and we ask that everyone in every section remain seated throughout the meeting and that no side conversations take place so that everyone can hear our proceedings. If anyone should fail to cooperate with the established protocols, that person will be warned and then removed from the meeting if necessary under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 39, Section 17. Thank you for your full cooperation and we will move on to Article 19. However, before we begin that, I had a request that our boards here on the stage identify themselves again for you. So I'll start with the Board of Selectmen if they would reintroduce themselves to our assembly, please.
David Singer, member of the Board of Selectmen.
Karen Spiewack, member of the Board of Selectmen.
John McGrath, member of the Board of Selectmen.
Deborah Noble, member of the Board of Selectmen.
And the Finance Committee to my left, please.
Henry Kamasi, Finance Committee.
John Kradowski.
Carol Broder.
And Jason Julian.
Thank you all. Article 19, Zoning Bylaw Amendment pertaining to Energy Storage. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning by law, Section 200-2, definitions by adding the following definition for energy storage as follows. Energy storage: the capture of energy produced at one time for use at a later time. A device that stores energy is generally called an accumulator or battery. Energy comes in multiple forms, including radiation, chemical, gravitational, potential, electrical potential, electricity, elevated temperature, latent heat, and kinetic. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning by law, Section 200, 3.2b, use regulation schedule, by adding a new line, 6v, energy storage as printed before you, with N's not allowed in AR40, RSE, NB, V, CB, and under special permit in industrial and business enterprise park, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. Do we have a motion on this article?
I move that Article 19 be accepted as printed.
We have a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second before us that this article be accepted as printed. The recommendation of the Planning Board?
The Planning Board recommends approval of the article.
And the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, please.
The Board of Selectmen supports this article.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on the article? Ms. Deggan.
Good evening. Lori Deggan, 106 Osgood Road. I was the chairperson of the Solar Moratorium Committee.
Do you want to just raise that mic up so that they all -- thank you.
Thank you all for voting in the moratorium. It gave us time to look into new industries because it's hard to stay ahead of anything coming up. So frequently, we would check with the DOE-R to see what financial incentives are out there because that pushes the market, hence why we have a lot of solar. So in doing so, the next big money push is incentives for large solar or alternative energy battery storage systems. There is so much solar in the grid that they can't accept anymore, so they're pushing these very large tractor trailer size batteries with HVAC units attached. So again, we're trying to stay ahead of technology and plan. So this article was presented. It's allowed right now in the industrial areas. The Planning Board is going to be studying zoning this next year, so the agricultural, which is 85 percent of the town, will be looked into. So it will change, and I expect batteries to be allowed in other areas, but for right now, until we know what we're dealing with, again, this is good. It just protects us, so thank you.
Thank you for the extra information. Anything further to be said on this article? Because this is a zoning article, a two-thirds majority in the affirmative is necessary for passage. As there was limited discussion, I will attempt a voice vote, but it would have to be unanimous or we will count. All those in favor of accepting Article 19 as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by no?
No.
We will count then. We have tellers from the Registra's office and I have people from the Finance Committee so that we can double check. Do we have a teller for the central section from the -- okay. We start at the front. All those in favor of Article 19 as printed, please signify by raising your voter registration And Jason, if I can ask you and your teller, Kim, to please count the stage. I'm sorry. Are we -- are you in agreement, then I'd take your count.
Four.
Four, oh, okay. And 28? We say it softly, okay. All opposed by the same sign? 19 in the negative. Article 20, Zoning Bylaw Amendment pertaining to Power Facilities. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning by law, Section 200-3.2b, Use Regulation Schedule, subsection 6 Communications, Transportation, and Public Utility Uses, lines L, M, N, and S, by requiring special permits in some instances where site plan review and approval, P, is presently required as follows, and as follows refer to the chart printed in your town meeting booklet. Note that the strike-through font indicates text to be deleted and the bold font indicates replacement text, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. Is there a motion on this article?
I move that Article 20 be approved as amended by the Planning Board.
And if there is an amendment, do you have it in writing?
It's in this.
I know it's in the booklet, but you need to incorporate that in your motion so that your motion might read as amended by the Planning Board specifically, and then share that. Okay?
She goes to the microphone. I can't hear her.
They can't amend it.
She's going to say it again.
On line 6L.
Would you start again, please?
I'm sorry. The Planning Board recommends approval of this article with the following two amendments. On line 6L, gas gasoline transmission facilities in the BEP column, strike the letter P and insert the letters SP. On line 6S, that begins natural gas distribution stations. Do you want me to read the whole entire -- and piping provided that any portion --
Oh, no, you can -- that just indicates which line. I thought you meant the rest of the statement. Go ahead.
Delete the last two sentences which read a variance may be granted by the zoning Board of Appeals. All gas storage tanks in such facilities shall be subsurface.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and second before us, and I'll repeat just for clarification, that Article 20 be approved as recommended by the Planning Board with the following two amendments. On line 6L, gas gasoline transmission facilities in the BEP column, strike the letter P and insert the letters SP. On line 6S, that begins natural gas distribution stations, delete the last two sentences which read a variance may be granted by the zoning Board of Appeals. All gas storage tanks in such facilities shall be subsurface. Is there anything to be said regarding this article? Again, a two-thirds vote in the -- did you have a question or please come forward. Please come --
Can I speak really loud? I can't walk.
Okay, all right. Speak very loud, then just identify yourself and where you live, please.
My name is Kathy Benjenin. Do I have to give my address?
Yes.
44 Old Worcester Road, Charlton. I would like to ask you, Madam Moderator, if these zoning articles that we're voting on tonight could be passed over with the exception of the solar and the one that affects Treehouse so that the new director of the planning has an opportunity to review these all and give his input.
I'm sorry, but we will be bringing forward all of the articles on the warrant as was posted. That is required, okay?
May then I make a motion that we pass over this article?
We have a motion on the floor, so --
Hold on that number. Got you.
All right. Anything to be said on this article? Article 20, as stated with the Planning Board's recommendation. Again, a two-thirds majority in the affirmative is necessary for passage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
We will count again, so if my counters would please do so. Those of you who are in favor, please raise your voter registration card. And please leave it up until the counters have gone by. We're doing a double count to be certain. Article 20 passes with a necessary two-thirds majority by a vote of 98 to 25. Article 21, Zoning Bylaw Amendment pertaining to Site Plan Review. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning by law, Section 200-7.1D6C, Site Plan Review, to state that final action shall take place within 90 days after the close of the public hearing as follows. Within 90 days after the close of the public hearing, the Planning Board shall take its final action on the application, render its decision, file its decision with the town clerk, and notify the applicant of its decision, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. A motion on this article?
I move that Article 21 be accepted as printed.
We have a motion that the article be accepted as printed. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second before us that Article 21 be accepted as printed. Is there anything to be said on this article? Hearing none?
Excuse me. Madam Moderator, I would like to amend this article so that 90 days becomes 15 days.
Is there a second to that amendment? And you need to put it in writing, please, for us, and send it forward. I did not hear a second, I don't think, did I? Second, all right. We have a motion and a second before us to change the 90 days to, did you say 15?
Yes.
15? Anything to be said regarding that change? All right. In terms of the amendment, just a moment, I didn't recognize you just yet. Sir?
Stephen Sage, Lincoln Point Road. I'd just like to know the reason for that change.
I'll see if we can have an answer for you. Okay. Anything further to be said on the amendment? All right. An amendment requires only a majority, so we will attempt a voice vote. This would change our presentation on Article 21 to 15 days after the close of the public hearing. All those in favor of that amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by no? I think that I would say that the amendment has failed. All those in favor of the article as originally submitted with 90 days after the close of the public hearing, please signify by saying aye. Will attempt a voice vote?
Aye.
All opposed by no? I think the two-thirds, necessary two-thirds, has been achieved and Article 21 passes. Article 22, Zoning Bylaw Amendments Pertaining to Penalties for Zoning Violations. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning by law, Section 200-7.16G3, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning by law, Section 200-7.1G3, sorry, enforcement and penalty by changing the maximum fine for zoning violations from $50 to $300 per day as follows. Whoever violates any provision of this by law shall be punished by a fine imposed by a court of law, not exceeding $300 for each offense, and each day that such violation continues shall constitute a separate offense, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. Do we have a motion on this article?
I move that Article 22 be accepted as printed.
Is there a second on Article 22? We have a motion before us that Article 22 be accepted as printed. It has been seconded so we can open for discussion. Sir?
Stephen Sage, Lincoln Point Road. When it says not exceeding $300, does that mean it can be less by somebody's choice or it's absolutely for sure going to be $300 a day? And if that's the case, I'd like to know why this is the change from 50 to 300.
Thank you for bringing that up. Is there a response perhaps from Planning Board?
Yes, it is not exceeding 300 and that is the state maximum. We are much lower than the state in most other towns, but it's up to a judge to decide that amount. Also, well, the other question, we changed it. It hasn't been changed for years and we thought that we should have the ability in case it is a major violation, there should be a higher penalty to force people to come into compliance.
Okay. And the Planning Board is supporting this article?
The Planning Board is supporting this article.
And the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen has not taken a position on that article.
The Board of Selectmen has not taken a position on this article. Okay? Is there any further discussion regarding this article?
Madam Moderator?
Yes?
I would like to propose that this article be voted down and that it goes back to the Planning Board and an actual list of violations with fees are associated with it so that it will eliminate neighbor going after neighbor. We've seen a lot of that lately. So why don't we just send it back to the Planning Board and have them do a much better job in defining their fee structure or fine structure around this article?
Rather than saying a better job, I think it would be better to say a more clear definitive program.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that view. Any other discussion regarding this article? Ma'am?
Madam Moderator, Kristin Castigian, 88, Carroll --
You tip that down. I think you can tip it down a little.
Madam Moderator, is that better?
Yes.
All right. Kristin Castigian, 88, Carroll Hill Road. I was actually at the hearing when the attorney, the land use attorney, Mark Babrowski, recommended this change to protect the town. And he pointed to the state law and said that this is what the state law allows and that this is what it should be. So that's where it came from. The Planning Board is following the direction of the land use attorney, Mark Babrowski. Thanks.
Thank you for sharing that. Anything further to be said on this article? Ms. Benjamin?
I would like to make a correction on what was just said. The Land Board, I'm sorry, the Planning Board attorney brought that to the attention of the Planning Board, that that was the maximum, that they could in fact do this. It was not a recommendation but just a piece of knowledge.
Thank you. Sir?
Steve Corona, 17 Old Worcester Road. I was at that same meeting and Mr. Babrowski said that our penalties were well antiquated and that $50 just doesn't, it doesn't have any teeth in the outcome of the -- so he recommended, he did, I was at that meeting, he recommended like the $300 state minimum, which was what --
Thank you. Anything further to be said in this article? Sir?
Madam Moderator, Lucas Stevens, 87 Oxtred Road. Are there any examples available of surrounding municipalities and their fine structures available? Not maybe the Planning Board or someone can answer that, but maybe it'll give a definitive, clearer picture of what we're changing.
Thank you for raising your concern. Does the Planning Board wish to respond?
When we were looking at this change, we did look at other towns' structure and it seemed the majority did, were at the state maximum. Now, remember, this just gives us the ability to go up to 300, so for very serious violations, that could be used by our zoning enforcement officer to force people to come into compliance or at least make it more expensive for them to be out of compliance. And lesser fees can clearly be used for more, for lesser violations. Just again, it gives us, gives the town more ability to protect itself.
Thank you for your explanation. Anything further to be said? Just, I'm going to call on Attorney Cosgrove.
Just a question. Can you hear me? The, if it says up to $300, who will decide how much the fine is in a particular case? A dollar, $10, $50, 25, 300? Is that set forth elsewhere in the bylaw?
Does the Planning Board have a response?
Kurt, do you have a -- Because it's out of our hands when it gets to that level, so --
All right. I will ask our zoning enforcement officer to speak to that question.
I am unclear as to how this would affect my day-to-day activities in fining at this time.
Thank you. Anything further to be said regarding this? Another comment or question?
Madam Moderator, Marge Russell from Old Worcester Road. I'm reading the bylaw change and it says a fine imposed by a court of law. So it's, that's where the fine would come from.
Thank you. Anything further to be said?
Madam Moderator?
Mr. McGrath?
A quick question for, through you to the zoning enforcement officer. Currently, Kurt, do you impose the fines and do you have the ability to collect them without going to a court of law?
Ms. Meskis?
A statute that we have adopted in our bylaws, I believe it's 21D, sets forth a non-criminal ticketing system that we use for various things within the town, and that is almost like a traffic ticket. That is appealed to the clerk magistrate. This I do see where it says imposed by a court of law. That just does not jive with what I know, so that's why I say I am unclear on what this is. So that's why I say I am unclear on what this is. Currently, our fine structure is each day is considered a separate violation and is capped at $50.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Noble?
So then if I'm reading this correctly and trying to understand what Kurt is also saying as a zoning enforcement officer, going to mesh these two. This says imposed by a court of law, not exceeding $300, but we don't actually go to a court of law. We issue a fine like ticket and then that goes before a magistrate. And I'm wondering, would that be the magistrate at the district court that they would go to? And then are the cases then pled before the magistrate? For example, for Charlton, I believe it would be the Dudley District Court and the magistrate there. So it's not that it actually goes into a courtroom, but does it go before the magistrate in his chambers? Is that how it functions, Kurt?
Kurt, can you respond?
Ms. Noble, you are correct. It is a fair and informal hearing held before the magistrate and the magistrate has the ability to have a finding either for or against. And if that finding is against, the fine is still due. And if that fine is not paid, then it can be escalated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Further comment from the Board? Mr. McGrath?
Through the moderator, Mr. Meskis. Kurt, are we talking about two separate articles here?
I'm not sure and that's why I'm being careful about what I'm saying here. I didn't study this.
Madam Moderator, to the Chair of the Planning Board, Patsy, it appears that there is an issue here with what bylaw we are addressing and there could be two bylaws in conflict. My suggestion would be to go back and work with the zoning enforcement officer, who's the gentleman who has to enforce this and come up with, make sure we cover whatever bylaws we have fines in. And, you know, if you want it to be $300, you want it to be $300, but you don't want two bylaws on the books that are telling you to do two different things.
As far as I know, there is one and Mark Bobrowski, who is the foremost land attorney in Massachusetts, told us that we should, we should have it at the state max. That's...
Well, as far, as far as I really, and I know Attorney Bobrowski and I understand that, you know, he has an opinion on this. I just asked the zoning enforcement officer if there was two different articles that we're addressing here. It appears that he has, doesn't know what you're trying to do here. Okay, and he's the enforcement, he's the gentleman that has to enforce this stuff.
Thank you for sharing that opinion. I'm going to call on Attorney Cosgrove again to see if he can add some clarification here.
What they may be talking about, and I know Kurt alluded to it, there is, there is a separate article in the, I think in the general bylaws under, for the non-criminal disposition procedure. And that sets forth various bylaws. And generally, I think it says first offense, second offense, third offense, et cetera. And it also identifies the enforcing person. So it may be that, and I'm not commenting upon the $300, it's difficult to enforce these bylaws, but it may require an amendment to that section as well. And also, on a more positive note, I know there is, the City Solicitors Town Council Association is supporting legislation to make fines and violations more easily enforceable. Right now, you can go to the district court for a fine, as you said, it's like a parking ticket. If you go to the Superior Court, you can get an injunction, but the Superior Court cannot impose fines. So it's a very cumbersome enforcement process. So they're working on that, but, and I don't have all the Charlton bylaws with me here, but you may need to look at, and this isn't anything against Mark. He wouldn't be familiar with the Charlton general bylaws either. So it may be that you do need to amend that as well. But in the meantime, I'm not sure a court, a magistrate will not decide how much the fine is for first offense, second offense. And I don't know that Kurt can do that either. So if someone has the, all the general bylaws here, they could check that, but it's a little bit confusing.
Thank you. Sir, a comment or question?
Gerard Russell, Old Worcester Road. Just as a point of clarification, Madam Moderator, a clerk magistrate's hearing is a judicial process. A clerk magistrate is an officer of the court. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kastigian, a further comment?
Hi, Mrs. Moderator. I just wanted to point out that this is a zoning bylaw amendment to an existing bylaw. This already exists, they're just changing the amount. And then secondly, that the Planning Board had hearings on this and that if by some chance the zoning officer had questions, he probably could have asked him then, right? Thank you.
Anything further to be said?
Dawn Clay, 56 H Putnam Road. So for, at $50 a day, we were advised that that is exceptionally low for large violations. And many large companies could spend that and continue to spend that for an unlimited amount of time. We were advised by the attorney that other towns and the state law allows up to $300. That's up to, not at 300, for those large violations. It's good to get our bylaws up to at least the state maximum of what we can charge just for those situations. So that's why this bylaw is here. And it is, once again, as has been said, it's an amount for an existing bylaw that we have. We're just raising it from $50 to $300 to be the maximum.
Thank you for sharing your views. Further to be said, Mr. Singer first.
If I may, just a quick question, and then I'm not sure if this is for planning or the zoning enforcement officer or for town council. My question is, based upon everything I'm hearing, and I understand where the Planning Board is coming from and simply changing an amount, but based upon some of the other comments that have been made, if there are in fact more than one bylaw that could come into play and it turns out that we make this change and it is in fact in conflict with another bylaw and we pass this at 300, what then would or could happen? What are the potential repercussions or difficulties if we pass this tonight at 300 and it turns out to be in conflict with another bylaw?
I would, I ask Attorney Cosgrove if he would like to comment on that question.
Well, I guess I want to make it clear that the Planning Board has not asked for, intentionally not asked for any review of its proposed bylaws in years. And they've made out okay. This bylaw, and it is correct, that's the way it reads now, up to. So my guess is that, my guess, but that's all it is, that there probably is the provision in the non-criminal disposition where they, where they have steps and that this would raise the top step to 300, but you might have to come back. This will go to the Attorney General as any bylaw will and they'll rule on it. So we'll get some clarification from that if it passes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bobrowski?
Through the moderator, probably to the Planning Board, just a question was asked before that I don't know if I actually finally heard the answer to. Who actually defines what the amount is? So I know we have a sliding scale potentially up to 300. Is it in fact the zoning enforcement officer or are we basically abdicating that responsibility to a magistrate? Because, so that's one. And then two, if it's the former, i.e. the zoning enforcement officer, would you be amenable to making an amendment to this based saying, instead of imposed by a court officer or a court of law, to imposed by the zoning enforcement officer? So I'm just trying to find out what that amount is because I would, I would not want to have, let's just say unfair ticketing. So if one person had $50, one person had 75, you know, how does that really work? And, and do we need to modify the language?
The Planning Board wish to respond?
Based on the violation, there should be different amounts because there could be a small violation or there could be a major violation that, that should be very expensive to force people to come into compliance. All I can answer is that Mark Bobrowski's comment, he, he was dealing with our zoning bylaws quite a lot during the last year and his comment was, he was surprised that it was still so low. That was, and he didn't want, he didn't recommend, say anything about the legal part or who was going to make the decision of the court, you know, that it would get settled in the court. He said that he, his clerk comment was that it should be raised to the, to the state max to give the town better protection in case somebody was in, out of compliance with our zoning bylaws.
I think the question you asked though was who is determining it now even when we're up to 50?
Correct, because I would assume that is what we would do on a go forward.
Right, and Ms. Meskis, can you respond to that? How is it determined now? This is an increase to 300. How are the fines determined now when it's up to 50?
I do not have the information in front of me at this time to be able to make a reasonable conclusion.
Thank you. Attorney Cosgrove, did you have a further comment?
No.
Anything further to be said?
Yes, hi, I'm Noreen Johnson Smith from 136 Dresser Hill Road. I just wanted to state that this is a simple matter of raising the cap on any fine that we could charge as a town for offenses. And Chapter 7 Mass. General Law, I just looked it up online, specifically includes this exact same language that provides a cap not exceeding $300. So it's a fairly simple replacement of a $50 charge with a $300 charge. I don't see anything controversial and likewise, I don't think we need to spell out all of the operational logistics of the town in every bylaw, nor do we already. It's a pretty simple amendment.
Thank you for sharing that. If nothing further to be said on this, we will do a counted vote. So all those, again, a two-thirds majority in the affirmative is necessary for passage. All those in favor, please signify by raising your voter registration card. Please keep it in the air until the counters have completed their task. Thank you.
36.
Thank you. All those opposed by the same sign? By a vote of 91 in the affirmative to 38 in the negative, Article 22 passes with the necessary two-thirds majority. Before we, before we proceed, Attorney Cosgrove has a comment he would like to add.
We finally succeeded in pulling up the Charlton general bylaws and the provision with respect to enforcement of the zoning bylaw. It, there's one particular section that's different, but the rest, including this, is presently $50. So you will need to come back to amend that portion of the bylaw if the Attorney General approves this amendment. And what happens in the meantime, I don't know.
All right, thank you. Article 23, zoning bylaw amendment pertaining to the removal of the moratorium on large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems, adopted at the 2018 annual town meeting and to adopt a new section, 200-5.21, large solar energy systems. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, one, to allow the one-year moratorium on non-municipal large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations adopted as Article 28 at the 2018 annual town meeting to expire. Two, to amend the zoning bylaw by changing the name and definition in Section 2 definitions from large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation to large solar energy system as follows, printed in full in your town meeting booklet, beginning with Section A purpose through Section F severability or take any action relative thereto or thereon. Do we have a motion on Article 23? Is there a second? And I would ask that in repeating your motion, I will add the detail to the recommendation of the Planning Board. So we have a motion and a second before us that Article 23 be approved as amended by the Planning Board. Specifically, the Planning Board recommends approval of this article with the following changes to Section 200-5.21B applicability. Strike-through font indicates text to be deleted and italic font indicates text to be inserted. Under applicability, this bylaw applies to all large solar energy systems and their energy facilities and to any physical modifications that materially alter the type, configuration, or size of these facilities or related equipment. The Planning Board shall approve no more than 40 total large solar systems townwide and no system shall exceed 5 MW DC. This limit shall not include roof-mounted canopy or municipal systems on town-owned parcels. I assume we have the recommendation of the Planning Board. Is there a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen supports the article.
Board of Selectmen supports the article. Anything to be said on this article? Ms. Deggan?
Lori Deggan, Osgood Road. I was the chair of the Solar Moratorium Committee and I just want the residents to know that, well, thank you for coming. That means we all care. That says a lot that we're here tonight. Our group cared as well. We had Ed, Fire Chief Ed Knopf, Conservation Member Bob Hartwig, Planner Bill Scanlon, Board of Selectmen David Singer and Karen Spiewak, and Resident Eric Falcone and myself, as well as assistance from Kurt, the Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen and Robin. We held hearings where residents could email or come in and ask questions. We had public hearings. So I just want people to know there's a lot of information here. We're a group that has no skin in the game. Last year, we stood here and everyone called solar a cash cow. So it's not. Anything that comes too easy, obviously there's a reason. We can, I gave some people flyers when they came in to explain it, to speed this process up. But it's a good document. Everything in it has been accepted at other towns. It's been accepted by the Attorney General's office. The one issue that has not is an addition by our town planner that states if solar should be tax exempt, then they will look into pilots, but the pilot has to be an amount that the assessors, our tax collector, our finance committee, all agree on. Solar is not a cash cow. We are paying money out. There is a huge tax loophole that many of you have heard about. And because we've already closed... And because we've already closed the fiscal years where we have 15 abatements pending right now, we have to cough up that money. And I'm sure someone from finance can explain it better than me. But I just want people to trust that on this committee, no one had any skin in the game. We have no family that has solar. We were strictly looking out for the other 13,500 people and not just the handful of landowners and the nonprofits that have flooded our town. So I hope someone in finance maybe could explain how much money we're looking at losing. And these figures that I handed out are up to date. We have 30 that are either in or in the planning stage. We have 15 or 16 abatements. And then we run the chance of losing $700,000 per year because solar is tax-exempt through a loophole that legislation has been trying to close it for over three years. It's not happening. And the DOE is even giving more incentives now with the batteries. So we have put battery storage in here. We've allowed accessory. The fire department voiced their concerns on safety because it's lithium ion. It's just a huge document, so I hope people read it and trust their fellow townspeople that we're just volunteers trying to do sound planning for something that should have been done years ago. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Sir?
Randy Benson, Planning Director. I just wanted to give a brief overview.
Could you speak a little closer to the mic, sir, so we can hear better? Thank you.
Yes, can you? Is this better?
Yes.
I just wanted to give a brief overview of how they got to this point today. Article 23 zoning bylaw amendment pertaining to the removal of moratorium on large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems adopted at the 2018 annual town meeting and to adopt new section 2000-5.21 Large Solar Energy Systems. At its May 8th planning board meeting.
We did go through that. We read that. So could you just share your comment regarding it? Please.
I do think that they have done their due diligence and put together a really good replacement for the old Article 19 with the new one now. I think that I highly recommend it myself that this is a much better suited bylaw for the town to go with the new as written regulation. So I would highly recommend it.
Thank you for sharing that view. I think the gentleman was next.
Roger Cludier, 17 Coburn Road. I like this bill and I support it. The only issue I have is on the amendment, they went from 30 to 40 solar facilities. And we have, I believe, 30 in works right now, and 21 are applying for abatements. So the only disagreement I have with the planning board on this amendment is that we should keep it at 30 because if they're not going to pay taxes, we really can't afford to have them in town. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you for sharing that opinion. Ma'am?
Alita Rohr, 1 Berlin Game Road. Solar is not cost-effective. I'm reading from, and I will submit my information if anybody would like it over email. The cost to consumers of renewables has been staggeringly high, making electricity significantly more expensive across the United States for two reasons. They are unreliable, thus requiring 100% backup. That would be your great big energy systems that everybody's upset about. Solar will always need backup, always. An energy plant will always need be. From existing power plants, thus nothing has been remedied and worse has been accomplished. I believe the gravest concern for the environment now is deforestation. Am I right? That's what we're teaching our children and that's what we're doing to Charlton for solar. I understand. Let me continue.
Excuse me, I just want you to be sure that you're directing your comments to the article, either supporting this article or not. So if you could focus right on that.
Solar panels are energy dilute. They require extensive land, transmission lines, and mining. The energy density of the fuel, whether wool, whether wood, coal, sunlight, wind, or uranium, determine energy's environmental impact. Because sunlight is energy.
Excuse me, once again.
No, this is about solar. This is about solar.
Well, I know it's about solar, but our point here is to support this article. So what I'd like you to do is say that you support it or do not and succinctly give a reason why. Thank you.
Succinctly is something I hope to master. I do not support this. I support the continued moratorium of solar because right now, what's being discovered about solar is not good. It's not energy efficient. It's going to cost the people of Charlton through the nose. Removing these panels, they cannot be put in landfill. They are toxic, what's called electronic waste. Charlton taxpayers will be paying for their removal. They degenerate from year to year. They are vulnerable to hurricanes. I would remind everyone of Hurricane Maria that took out several solar farms in Puerto Rico. They now have a toxic waste dump site that no one's talking about, but there, panels were filled with cadmium, which is toxic and carcinogenic. We get tornadoes here. It's not a good idea. I believe the moratorium should be kept in place because solar panels are the most extractive of all energy resources requiring 17 times the resources as nuclear, and no, I'm not a nuclear nut. I'm just reading what I found when I researched this. Requiring 17 times the resources as nuclear while returning just 2% the energy invested. The former president announced to the United States of America that solar and the new green technologies were going to cost more. I don't know anyone who is saving money now from solar. Forty new farms in Charlton is environmental insanity. Solar is not green, it's not clean, and it's not cost-efficient.
Thank you for sharing that information. Ms. Chalk?
Nancy Chalk, City Depot Road. Nancy Chalk, City Depot Road. I came up with another question, but now I have another question on top of that. She mentioned keeping the moratorium to vote this down because, but I want to know if it does get voted down, solar plants could just come in here and still have no rules, I guess?
The moratorium, I'll let someone else answer. The moratorium was for a year. In the year. Does the planning board want to address that?
It was only for the year and the year is up. So what would technically happen is we would go back where it would be allowed anywhere at any time with no limits.
Okay.
And it kind of has an allowed use. We would have no control. What this does, this, it originally came to us with 30 from the solar committee. And we felt, the planning board felt that if we increased it to 40, it would more likely pass because we felt that landowners would not want that limitation. But that's what this does. This kind of puts it in control and puts a limit on it and also changes it to be special permit. So the resident isn't going to have a solar farm right next door to them. It puts a little more control on and limits.
Okay, all right.
Further question, Ms. Chalk?
Was, to the Finance Committee, please. What is the actual amounts of loss that we're going to experience with these?
I'm not sure if they can answer the abatement question or not.
Tonight, we couldn't answer that question.
Okay. Do you have any, like, potential ideas? Nothing? Okay, well, thank you.
Does our Director of Finance have any comment?
Thanks. It's in, the last day new, it was still in court and being debated. And even if we, and it's not just the town of Charlton, and this is going on statewide. If the case is determined that they are exempt and needs to be a pilot instead, we'll probably do an appeal. That would be up to the town administrator and the selectmen to decide to appeal that. And then if you outright lose, then it's a hit to your overlay, your abatements and exemptions. Right now, we're probably, I think the number I originally had was around a half a million. That probably is going to climb if more and more people start filing for the abatements.
Thank you.
Roger Cludier, 17 Coburn Road. May I, can I, make an amendment to the amendment to reduce that number to 30?
You may amend the motion.
The motion.
To reduce the number from 40 to 30.
Yes, I would like to do that. I don't know if anybody wants to second that.
We would also ask that you please put that amendment in writing, okay?
I just circled the 30 because that's all I'm asking to be changed, is back to the 30 enough. Would you like me to fill that out?
Yes, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Anything to be said? We'll consider the amendment now that would maintain this article at 30 as opposed to the increase to 40 as was recommended by the planning board. Anything to be said on the amendment itself? For the, Mr. Lamansky?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Robert Lamansky. Just to be clear, and I think Mrs. Dignan can answer this correctly. Sorry, I believe Mrs. Dignan can answer this. I believe there are already 25 existing solar farms and I think there are either four or five that are in the process. And that the number 30, which that totals to, then that means if this amendment passes and the solar passes, then no more solar farms will be allowed in the town of Charlton. Is that correct?
I believe that is.
Where's Lori? Is that correct, Lori?
I believe that. I think the planning board could tell you also whether or not there are already 30 permits out. Ms., is that, did you want? There are current. They're not built, but there are 30 applications approved at this point. So, Mr. Lamansky, you would be correct that this, we would be at the maximum should this amendment and then the article itself pass.
Right, so what it's doing is it would be eliminating solar from, in allowed use in the town of Charlton, correct?
No, it would be limiting the number. It would stop the growth of them.
Correct, correct. So those that are pre-existing would be pre-existing. And the only way for a new one to come on would be for an old one to leave. Because we would be at, we're already at 30 when you think about existing and those that are in application. So if the bylaw says 30, then this isn't 30 more. This is, this is, we're at the maximum, correct?
If I could, Madam Moderator?
For clarification, this just came from our new town planner. I asked for the newest numbers. It's still 30. It just sounds a little different here. Charlton already has 21 solar energy manufacturing farms that have been built and everyone has seen them over the winter. Three are under construction. An additional four have been approved, but construction hasn't started yet. Another one is approved pending the outcome of the moratorium and one is subject to the zoning freeze. So only one of these and any future projects will be required to follow our new regulations. So yes, we're just about at the max, even though they're not in yet, they're still coming. But we do have two town meetings a year. And like I said at the hearing, Boston has had three years to clarify this clause 45 tax loophole. And unfortunately, the appellate tax board has been siding with the solar developers who already have incentives to come to town. They are calling Massachusetts a Nirvana state because now they can qualify for personal property tax. So my argument was, let's send Boston a message. You get your tax income. Give us our promised revenue of the cash cow everybody spoke of last year. It's, the lobbyists are really taking over. So, Rob, I understand. I know you have land and you would do it right. But I think we need to play hardball with Boston to pay attention and get these bills passed.
Thank you for clarifying the numbers. Anything further to be said? Sir?
John Proudley, Patridge Hill Road. This is a question. The 40 figure that is on the table right now, if we do not vote to sustain the 40 and went to a 30, is there any danger that the Attorney General, upon reviewing the whole thing, would say, "You've really put in an extended moratorium and therefore take it back and rework it"? If you have no margin for growth whatsoever, it may be viewed as a permanent moratorium and there may be a danger in getting that accepted in Boston. That's my question.
I'll see if I can obtain an answer for that. Attorney Cosgrove will share some thoughts.
It's a good question. I don't know of any case in point on a ruling by the Attorney General. Certainly, an argument would lie, though, that the moratorium was to allow for planning. And unless there's a strong state policy against limiting it to that number, I would think it would pass. But I know the state is in favor of it, so it'd probably roll the dice.
Thank you. Anything further regarding the amendment, the reduction from 40 to 30, sir?
Roger Cludier, 17 Coburn Road. My personal feeling on this is if the state removes the tax loophole, then I have no problem with 40 solar farms or 50. It doesn't bother me at all. I just don't think, we'd be foolish to be putting in solar farms if we can't collect taxes on them. I mean, you're using up valuable land that you could tax in other areas and you're just giving it away. So that's why I think it should be 30. And then if the state fixes the loophole, does what they keep saying, hopefully they will do, then I have no, you know, in a future meeting, we can certainly bump this number up. That's my opinion.
Thank you for sharing that opinion. Sir?
Mike Sullivan, 58 Freeman Road. I'm a little conflicted in my attempting to understand this because page 19, under applicability, it already says 30. It doesn't say 40. And the 40 comes in under these comments underneath the sponsor and the planning board. And that bold type is not part of the article, is it?
The article is a way of giving the voters notice about what we will be discussing and voting on, okay? And that is as it exists now. The motion before us was made by the planning board who is recommending that we move up to 40. So that's the question now. Someone has amended the original motion to increase to 40. We have an amendment before us now to remain at the 30, and that is our question. So we'll decide on the 30 first and then however that vote goes, we'll go back to the main motion.
Thank you.
Which would either be at 30 or 40.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for raising that. I'm sure clarification helps everyone. Anything further to be said? Our Finance Director.
I just want to clarify and make sure that there's not a lot of confusion on this. When we're talking about the abatements, that is because the taxes are based on evaluation. They're not saying that they would be completely without paying taxes. They're saying you would have to have a pilot agreement, a payment in lieu of taxes. And that has to be negotiated with the Board of Selectmen. So it's not like they would pay nothing. It's a different way of doing it. Millennium, you have a pilot with right now. The reason they like to do that is because they have a set amount for the next 20 years of how much they have to pay every year. It's already predetermined so they can budget better. That's the difference with it. It's more beneficial to the town to have it with the valuation.
Thank you. One more comment?
Comment on that. From what I understand, the town of Barry lost their appeal with the appellate tax board. They had to go back three years and pay $65,000 a year back. We were against pilots because pilots were originally set up for nonprofits. We were against pilots, because pilots were originally set up for nonprofits, not for a very large profit-making power plant. So we didn't address the pilots. So to ask the twenty-three or whatever that are in now, or have their permits to do pilots, why would they if they could qualify as tax-free for their personal property tax? I understand the two. But the personal property tax is what they are fighting, which, to those of us here, that would be not our land, but our home, which is the big value. So that's how I interpreted it, which seems a little different, but
Thank you. With nothing further to be said, I would call Mr. Borowski.
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 And you promised
Mr. B.
And you promised last meeting, that's the worst part now. Just very quickly, I believe, one way or another, this article needs to pass. The only thing I would recommend is that we vote for Mr. Cludier's motion, because having, having an extended moratorium is not an option. So to vote this down, all it does is say, we're going back to the rules that we had before, which are, let's just say remarkably liberal on certain things, which could upset a lot of homeowners in this room. So this has to pass, in my opinion. It's really now, I think, the vote's going to be, do we want thirty, or do we want forty, or even a number potentially in the middle? I happen to agree with the, with the amended petition for thirty for now. The point being that we can always come back in October, we can come back next year and modify it again. But when you weigh risk versus reward, clear-cutting fields, giving tax abatements, et cetera, I don't really see what the benefit is to us to bring this up to forty. So again, please join me in supporting Mr. Cludier's amendment to have thirty.
Thank you. Mr. Singer, you wish to speak as a individual?
David Singer, Two Killey Drive. Forgive me, but I always felt when speaking as a citizen, I should come down here.
I agree. Thank you.
Sorry, Bill. I agree with Mr. Cludier's motion. I will say quite frankly that Ms. Dignan is probably the most solar knowledgeable person I've ever met. The research put into this was impeccable. To Mr. Borowski, Mr. B, Mr. Borowski's point, if this were to fail, we are effectively making it open season for solar in Charlton. And I think that's unacceptable. I'm happy with thirty, that was our original intent. If there's a problem to their points, we could always raise it again at a later meeting. But we need this to pass, otherwise, the moratorium was for one year, it's over. If this doesn't go through, it's just open season.
Thank you. With nothing further to be said, we're going to vote first on the amendment. And the amendment is for thirty, a limit of thirty. The amendment requires just a majority vote for passage. We'll try a voice vote. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The amendment, which brings it back to thirty, does pass with the necessary majority. Now, we would be voting on Article twenty-three as printed. As printed, which incorporates the amendment. Anything further to be said? Are you all set with that?
No, I have a question. I thought the, I thought the motion to amend passed.
It did. So now we're looking at the motion.
Not as printed.
As amended.
As amended, right. With incorporating the amendment.
Correct.
So that the printed material here is accurate. Okay?
No.
So we have a motion
No.
Before us to accept Article twenty-two as amended.
But the printed material is not amended.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
As amended.
As amended, right.
Clear on that.
As, Article twenty-three as amended with thirty, which is what is printed in your town meeting booklet.
Oh, I see.
Do you see?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I think we've got that square. All right. We will, this requires a two-thirds vote, therefore, we will use our voter registration cards. All those in favor, please signify by raising your voter registration cards, and we'll do a count. Oh, wait a minute, let's put them down, and let's try the opposed first. All those opposed? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The necessary two-thirds majority is achieved with only two dissenting votes. Article three is accepted as amended. Article twenty-four, zoning ban marijuana. To see if the town will vote to amend the youth regulation schedule of the Charlton zoning bylaw, section three point two, five Z, to provide that all marijuana establishments are prohibited in all districts, and to delete in its entirety section five point two zero of the Charlton zoning bylaw, and replace it with the following. Five point two zero marijuana establishments prohibited. Consistent with General Laws, Chapter ninety-four G, Section three A two, all types of adult-use recreational marijuana establishments, as defined in General Laws, Chapter ninety-four G, Section one, and nine thirty-five C M R five hundred point zero zero, including marijuana cultivators, craft marijuana cooperatives, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, independent testing laboratories, marijuana research facilities, marijuana transporters, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related business shall be prohibited within the town of Charlton, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. If there is no, I was just going to say, if there's no motion, we'll move on.
I move that Article twenty-four be approved as written.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Should.
We have a motion and second before us, that Article twenty-four be approved as written. Recommendation of the planning board, please.
The planning board recommends approval of the article as written.
Recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, please.
The Board of Selectmen does not support the article.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on this article? Mr. Sage?
Stephen Sage, Forty-One Lincoln Point Road. I have real concerns about this article. One, as a possible future entrepreneur, if I decided I wanted to develop a company that would move legal marijuana in our state from one place to another, this would prohibit me from opening that business. Also, I come from a family of several scientists, and if they decided that they wanted to develop any kind of laboratories or research facilities to determine the pros and cons and safety of recreational marijuana, they would not be able to open that kind of business in our town. I find this to be, frankly, un-American, in my opinion. Our country should be supporting small businesses. The fear that this article presents is that recreational marijuana is dangerous or something. I'm not sure what the fear is of the planning board, that they feel necessary to present this to our town, and I would like those kind of questions answered. Why is there such fear of recreational marijuana versus medical marijuana?
Thank you for sharing your opinion. Mr. Resack, did you wish to respond on behalf of the planning board?
I will answer your question on behalf of the planning board. The reason why the article is here is because the Board of Selectmen voted for this, and we wanted to give them, we wanted to carry out their promise to the town. The Board of Selectmen did vote to get this to town meeting, and we're, we got it to town meeting for them.
Mr. Borowitz?
I'll defer my time to Chairman Singer.
Are you speaking on behalf of the board or personally? Because if you're speaking on behalf of the board, there's no need to step down.
So I'll speak personally. David Singer, Two Killey Drive. The Board of Selectmen, from my view as a resident, listened to the taxpayers and put this article on the warrant, so that it would be here in the event that it passed at the polls, because it would be a two-part process. It failed at the polls, but was already put on this warrant, so it was required to be on. The Board of Selectmen does not support the article. As a citizen, I think I would also like to convey that to completely ban something from within your borders, from, you know, corner to corner, something that is legal within the state, I believe will be shot down without even a heartbeat by the Attorney General. Because you cannot outright ban something from your borders, completely from your borders, if it is legal.
Thank you for sharing your views. Sir?
Mike Mitchell, One Ninety-four Berlin Game Road. I would just like to voice my opinion on this. I know this has been a hot topic for this town, and personally, I support marijuana products. And I also understand why this is probably, this amendment is probably here. It's probably because people are afraid of big business, not small business. So really, the decision people have to make today is weighing the pros and cons. Are they going to ban something outright because they're afraid of what the big business might do that might trash their town? Or are they going to allow it because they're afraid it might hurt small business? Personally, I've seen what big business can do, and I'm a little concerned about that. So I, I don't think I would be crying if it was banned in this town. I can always just drive ten minutes to get whatever I need.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. McGrath?
Madam Moderator, I'll, I'll speak as a member of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
This item came up before the board about three months ago. And Patsy is right that we asked the planning board to support this. In the, at the town election, okay, it's a two-part, it's a two-step process, okay? At the town election, it was voted down, the townspeople voted it down. This, this article, whether it's approved here or not, goes nowhere. Okay? It goes absolutely nowhere. So it can be used as a barometer, if people want to use it as a barometer, but the article goes absolutely nowhere. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Singer? Yes?
So to Mr. McGrath's point, if it did in fact pass tonight, there would be no effect because the two-part process has already failed.
Thank you for clarifying that. Anything further to be said? I see one person approaching.
Hi, I'm sorry, it bothers me we talk up instead of to the people here. I'm Noreen Johnson Smith at One Thirty-Six Dresser Hill Road, and I may be in the complete minority here tonight, I have no idea, nor do I care if my vote winds up having an impact or not in the end. It's still my vote, it doesn't change the way I feel about it. I'm thrilled that we have legalized it, I'm glad we're not locking people up and putting them in jail for marijuana use. If any of you want to go home and smoke a joint, knock yourselves out, I don't care. But the libertarian in me also wants to worry about the general community, what's good for kids, leakage of drugs into unintended places, and our opportunity as a community to say what's important to us and how we want community life to be. Again, go grow your plants at home. In fact, I encourage you, because then you don't have to pay what is not small business. Not one of these marijuana-licensed businesses is a small hokey, you know, go-get-'em kind of local guy. These are all major corporations funded by R.J. Reynolds and the major tobacco growers who are putting billions into the industry in Canada and the United States, and they're taking advantage of communities that don't have proper zoning laws to drop in businesses that are not invited. And so my feeling is that this town does not stand to gain from having these businesses here, that the tax revenue promise of marijuana businesses for communities is a pipe dream. And legislators in the State House have said the same thing to me, that it was set up the wrong way, it has not been administered properly, and now we're stuck with the consequences. So for a variety of other reasons, again, go smoke your pot, I don't care, but I don't think this is good for the town, and I'm voting for zoning ban.
Thank you. Mr. Sage, a further comment?
Yes. If, if that is your thinking, then we probably need to make sure in the future we have a zoning article that bans any future alcohol establishments, any future tobacco establishments, because we know the effects that that has had, and if we want to protect our children, then we need to protect them from all these things that are out there.
Well, remember, we're, we're speaking just on this article
I'm just saying that the, the logic is that we allow other things in this community without any kind of restriction that have equally impacts that marijuana has, yet those we seem to be okay with. And that's why I do not support this at all.
Thank you. Anything further to be said on this article? Mr. Singer, did you have a comment? No? No, okay. All right, all those, one further comment.
One further comment. And it's, and we all know the elephant in the room, and the project that we're talking about is more VGG related. And we're talking about solar, we're talking about
I, I think this is speaking in gen, the zoning bylaw is speaking in general, so you could keep your comments to the bylaw in general, okay?
If, it's, the question that I have, you can answer it or not, and we've got everyone in front of us.
We'll find an answer if we can.
Okay. What, if the VGG project were to go through, what is the town revenue?
You're out of order. We'll allow the gentleman to speak.
It's, what would the town annual revenue be if the VGG project, just using that as an example, were to go through? There's the reason we're all talking about this. The, the numbers have been from a million dollars a year in revenue to seven million, I've read in the paper, but the
But I don't, I don't think your question is really relevant to this article, but I'll see if someone has an answer.
I, I think if we're, well, I'm just going to throw it out there. It's not, I, I realize this, this amendment doesn't really have a purpose to pass, but we did have a town meeting, I mean, a special town meeting where, where two-thirds of the voters showed up and said they did not want marijuana, large marijuana establishments in town, and it was pretty much ignored. I just want to make that point. It was, it was last August, August second, as a matter of fact.
Thank you.
Miss Moderator.
Mr. Singer?
Just in
Mark, go ahead, please.
In a response, I guess, to Mr. Cronus's comment that the people who came to town meeting spoke and they were ignored, I would argue that the people of Charlton were not ignored. They came to town meeting
Can you get closer to the mic?
They came to town meeting, they voted, they passed what they wanted, it was listened to, it went to the polls, and then the general consensus of the voters at the polls, in much larger numbers, said that they did not agree with the town meeting vote, and said no. So it actually was presented at both town meeting and to the polls, to the greater community at large, and it passed here, and it failed when it was put out to the community at large.
Thank you for reminding everyone of that two-step process again. One further comment?
Madam Moderator, Lucas Stevens, Oxford Road. I'm not sure if the clerk would have the exact number, but how many people actually voted to, voted down the special marijuana prohibition question at the last annual municipal election? I understand that it was a lot larger, and there was actually an increasing turnout from the twenty eighteen municipal election that voted down this marijuana question. So I believe with Mr. Singer, Chairman Singer, that the people have spoken town-wide. I mean, town meeting, you usually have only tops five hundred, six hundred people, whereas at this last election, I believe there was upwards towards about a thousand people. I mean, that was a much larger mandate that was given. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further to be said on this article? Again, we have a motion before us that Article twenty-four be approved as written, and again, a two-thirds vote is necessary in the affirmative for passage. We'll do a hand We'll do a hand raising first without a count and see if we can do it that way. If not, we will count. All those in favor of the article, Article 24, being accepted as printed, please signify by raising your voter registration card. It looks like it's going to be close, so I'll, I'll ask you to count, please. The first vote, this is for, all those in favor of Article 24 being accepted as printed. A yes vote. Thank you. All those opposed to the acceptance of Article 24, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Article 24 is defeated. Fifty-three in favor, 76 opposed. Article, Article 25, number of recreational retail marijuana establishments. To see if the town will vote to change the following within the zoning bylaw, 5.20 marijuana establishments. C. The Planning Board shall not approve more than three recreational retail marijuana establishments, or take any action relative thereto or thereon.
Madam Moderator-
Mr. Lemansky?
Thank you. As sponsor of this article, I request that it be withdrawn.
You are moving to withdraw this article?
That's correct, thank you.
Thank you. Motion to withdraw an article does not require a second, but it does require a vote, majority in the affirmative for passage and withdrawal of the article. Is there anything to be said on this? All those in favor of, we'll try a voice vote, all those in favor of withdrawing article, supporting the withdrawal of Article 25, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by no. The majority has it. Article 25 will be withdrawn. Article 26, retail sale of marijuana, to see if the town will vote to change the following within the zoning bylaw, principal uses, business uses, district, community business, marijuana establishments, retail sale of marijuana, and marijuana products and accessories, from N, not allowed, to S, P, special permit, as printed out in the chart before you, or take any action relative thereto or thereon.
Madam Moderator, Robert Lemansky is sponsor of this article. I respectfully make a motion to withdraw it.
Again, we have a motion before us to withdraw this article, which needs no second. Is there anything to be said on the matter? All those supporting withdrawal of Article 26, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by no. Article 26 will be withdrawn by an affirmative vote. Article 27, zoning map amendment, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning map, Section 200.3.1, by making the following changes. Add Assessors' Parcel 32B4, consisting of 36.23 plus or minus acres, currently zoned low-density residential R40 to the adjacent Business Enterprise Park District. The proposed zoning map change is shown on the attached map, which I think you will find in your town meeting booklet, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second before us to accept Article 27 as printed. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Hearing no discussion, I would call for a vote. Again, a two-thirds majority in the affirmative is necessary for passage. We'll try a show of hands without a count and see how we do. All those in favor of Article 27, please signify by raising your voter registration card. All opposed by the same sign. The necessary two-thirds majority is achieved. Article 27 is passed. Article 28, special legislation to amend Charlton Recall Special Act. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to file with the General Court a petition for special legislation, seeking to amend Section 2 of Chapter 210 of the Massachusetts Acts of 1994, which established the procedure required for holding of a recall election in Charlton. By deleting the words lined through below and adding the words shown in bold font below, the effect of such amendment being, A, to enlarge the time for return and filing of the required signed recall petition to the town clerk from 20 business days to 30 business days after 25 registered voters of the town file an affidavit containing the name of the officer sought to be recalled and a statement of the grounds for such recall. And B, to change the minimum quantum of certified signatures required on such a petition needed to require the Board of Selectmen to hold a recall election from 20% of the registered voters of the town to 30% of the total number of persons who voted in the most recent annual town election. Provided, however, that the legislature may reasonably vary the form and substance of the requested legislation within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. Section 2, any 25 registered voters of the town may file an affidavit with the town clerk containing the name of the officer sought to be recalled and a statement of the grounds for such recall. Upon certification by the Board of Registries of the required signatures, the town clerk shall deliver to the first-named voter on the affidavit a sufficient number of copies of petition blanks addressed to the Board of Selectmen. Demanding such recall, the blanks shall be issued containing the signature of the town clerk and the official town seal. They shall be dated and shall contain the name of the person whose recall is sought, the office from which recall is sought, and the grounds for such recall as stated in the affidavit, and shall demand the election of a successor to said office. The affidavit and a copy of the petition shall be entered in a record book to be kept in the office of the town clerk. The recall petition shall be returned and filed with the town clerk not later than 5 o'clock post meridian on the 30th business day after the filing of the affidavit, with signatures, names in place of residents of the signer, giving street and number of at least 30% of the total number of persons who voted in the most recent annual election. Within two business days of receipt, the town clerk shall submit the petition to the registrar of voters in the town, and the registrar shall forthwith certify thereon the number of signatures, which are those of registered voters of said town. The Board of Registries shall complete its certification within five business days and shall return the petition to the town clerk, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. Is there a motion on this article?
Madam Moderator?
Yes?
I move that Article 28 be accepted as printed.
Is there a second to Article 28?
Second.
We have a motion and seconded before us that Article 28 be accepted as printed. Is there any discussion regarding this article?
Madam Moderator?
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Singer?
I have a question, I think, for Town Council. I think Town Council may have written this, I'm not sure, or whoever, whoever wrote this. I'm just looking for some clarification, if I may, on why it says down below to change to 30% of the total number of persons who voted in the most recent annual town election, yet only a few lines above this is only asking for 25 registered voters. And there's a big difference to me between 25 people and 30% of an election turnout.
I believe one is to submit the affidavit and the other is for the actual recall. I'll allow Attorney Cosgrove to clarify that.
It's been a while since I took a look at this. Let's see.
I think I can explain. There's, it's a two-step process. You have to first file an affidavit, and then you have to go collect all the signatures.
And I assisted, I assisted-
You helped me.
Through, through the moderator.
Mrs., Mrs. Moderator, may I?
Yes.
Okay.
While Attorney Cosgrove looks it over here.
So a group of citizens brought this to Attorney Cosgrove, and, and we worked with him to, to update this. This, this recall procedure currently exists already for Charlton. The only parts that are being changed are the parts that are scratched out with strike-through, and the, and then the change would be the part that is bold, right, following the, the strikeout. Now, there, it's a two-step process to ever initiate any kind of recall for any kind of elected official in the town of Charlton and really anywhere else. The, the first step is that a certain number of voters, in this case, 25, have to actually file an affidavit with the town clerk. Once she certifies the affidavit, she would then give you a whole bunch of blanks, and you have to go collect signatures from town with the second threshold, which currently is an impossible number. We currently have 9,000 or over 9,000 registered voters, so we would actually have to collect over 1,800 signatures in less than, uh, less than a month to ever even attempt, and that's just to call an election where the person then has to either lose or win to change who's already in the office. So really, it's almost like three steps. There's an affidavit, you file it. Okay, you pass the affidavit. Now you get these blanks, go out and collect all your signatures, whatever threshold we set. Right now, the threshold's completely impossible. You could never recall anybody here. And then, and then, once you've, if you ever did collect the 400 signatures that we're trying to change this to, now they'd have to all be certified. If they're certified, then you could call for an election, in which case the incumbent is immediately on the ballot. And there's a safety net that you can't do this when somebody is in the beginning of their term or the very end of their term, because it would be frivolous because they're on their way in or on their way out anyways, so it'd have to be always midterm and always, you'd need some sort of major loss of confidence for, in someone's judgment, to be able to pull off gathering hundreds of signatures. A group of us did collect 367 signatures. It is not a small feat. It wasn't for recall, it was for a different petition, but I just want to point out that hand-gathering signatures, this is not an electronic process, is not a simple feat. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Did Attorney Cosgrove, before I call on Mr. Singer again, Attorney Cosgrove, did you have anything to say to clarify?
No, I think it's been clarified.
Thank you. Mr. Singer?
Just, if, if I can try and put a number on what Ms. Custidian just said. Based upon the old number or the old requirement and the number of registered voters in town, in order to gather enough certified signatures, you would have to get somewhere between 1,800 and 1,950 signatures in order for that to, to succeed.
Thank you. Anything further to be said? I think this gentleman was next, and then I'll come back to you. Sir?
So it seems as if the purpose of this article is to make it a lot easier to recall someone. Now, the figures that were cited were accurate. The, the way the, changing 20% of registered voters to 30% of the total person, number of persons who voted in the most recent town election is a decrease in the amount of people necessary to instigate a recall.
Correct.
Now, again, it has to go to a ballot and all this, but for these steps we're talking about. So if you take the last town election and the figures ending at the end of 19, uh, 2017, which are on the town's website, you had 94, you had 9,464 registered voters. That would require, under the 20% of registered voters, would require 1,893 people to move that along. Under the new language, if approved, it would require only 362 people
Based on the most recent election.
To move along.
Yeah.
So you're reducing, you're, you're making it almost 80% easier to recall someone. Now, someone has said it's almost impossible to recall someone. I don't know that that's ever happened. I've lived here since 99, and I've never heard it happen. I don't know what other towns do. But this seems to be a very radical demunization of the amount of people necessary to overturn an election.
Thank you for raising that point.
Which means I'm against the motion.
Thank you. Sir?
I think, yes, Steve Corona, 17 O. Worcester Road, I think the fact of the matter is that this is another loophole in the Charlton bylaws that we've never tightened up. And if you don't set your own statute as a, as a community and as a town, you default to the state mandate, which is 20% of the registered voters in town, which in our case would be 9,700 or 9,800. A lot of other towns, we've looked, we've researched, probably 80% have adopted their own special bylaws or statutes that, that have, similar to what we're doing now, that have made that a little bit easier. Not, we, we hope to God we never have to use it, but if we ever had to, at least it, it needs to be obtainable. So if you're asking people to go out and get 1,900 signatures in 21 days, it's impossible. You might as well not even have the recall law on the books. But if you're asking them to go out and get 300 or 350 signatures in 21 days, well, that's obtainable. And again, we hope we never have to use it, but it's just one of those loopholes that, and there were a lot of other towns, and, and we've got this, Kristen's probably got the names. Most of the towns around us has adopted similar things to what we're trying to do now. This isn't a vendetta-type thing. If you, if you want to question what I'm saying.
No, I just-
I would call on the town clerk to add-
I'm sorry.
Some clarification. Thank you for bringing up your point.
Just so people understand that we had a lot of people this time at the town election. Sometimes it's 300 or 500 people that vote. So 30% of 500 people would be a very small. It would be very small.
I, I, I was actually surprised when we, it, it was, I was surprised we had 9,500 voters at a town of 30, 13,000 people. I was shocked at that.
So the, the, this year at 1,200, 1,200 that voted is not typical at all.
Yeah, but, yeah, but look at the last couple of years. We're getting a lot more people involved.
Through the moderator?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for raising your point. Thank you for the additional information. Attorney Cosgrove?
Just a, a quick point of clarification. There is no Charlton bylaw on this. And it's a stat-, I believe, if memory serves, this was passed in 1991, and we fashioned it based upon statutes which other towns had passed. So it's an amendment to the statute. It authorizes, does not require the Board of Selectmen to petition the legislature to amend an existing statute that specifically applies only to Charlton, and the only change would be those lined through and put in bold font on the last page of your, on the second page of that article.
I, I-
Thank you for the additional important information. I believe Ms. Custidian was next.
I just wanted to clarify that it was a team of citizens that came up with this, and that we did poll numerous other communities, and I have all their data here. I'm not going to rattle it all off, but basically, a lot of communities have changed the threshold because it really doesn't make any sense to require signatures from 20% of the registered voters when that's not who turns up to vote. What, what we got in the last election was 1,200 registered vo-, people, people voted, right? So it makes more sense to base it on the actual turnout than, I mean, we don't get 100% vote. We, we don't get that. So I think you have to make it realistic. If people think that- If people think that the 30 percent is too low, then I would say amend it to 40 or 50 or whatever you think is realistic, but I wouldn't leave it as something that's completely impossible, but it's really up to the town. Thank you.
Thank you for adding those comments. Sir, another comment?
And I'm sorry, just one more comment. Mr. Cosgrove brought up a good point. This is a multiple-step process. This is something that actually has to be, from what I understand, approved by the legislator body and maybe even the governor or certainly the state reps. So, this is nothing that would be done this year, but it's why we're thinking about it.
Excuse me?
And it's a loophole. It might be, it might just make sense to move forward in that, because it's not, it's, we're looking at 2021 with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Singer?
David Singer, 2 Keely Drive. I agree with everything that's been said tonight. Yes, I think the process currently is onerous and really near impossible, but at the same time, to Mike's comment earlier, this, to me, is like a constitutional change as well. It should be challenging, but it also shouldn't be too easy. That being said, I would make a motion to change the requirement to 50 percent of the most recent election. And if it gets a second, I will happily put it in writing for you.
Second.
So, we are.
Thanks, Stefan.
We have a motion and second before us to amend this article so that it reads 50 percent of the total number of persons who voted in the most recent annual town election. Our continued discussion would be on the amendment itself, moving from 30 percent to 50 percent. I believe you had your hand up first.
A while. I also believe that the bar here is way too low. It holds elected officials hostage to small groups that have.
Excuse me, there's extra conversation. Please continue.
As I was saying, I believe the proposed was too low. It holds elected officials hostage. I believe that we need a more firm number. I do not believe that using a number that's based on how many people went to the polls is the right way to go. I would suggest that we use 10 percent of the registered voters in town. It's half of what it was. You have 10 extra days to play your game, and.
I don't think you should use that terminology. Thank you for expressing your views. I'm going to move on to the next person.
Hi. Adrian Smith, 31, Robert Boulevard. I would not, I'm not in support of either the motion or the amended motion as it stands. My reasoning being is that by reducing it to a percentage of the people who voted, you're actually lowering your standards into frivolous complaints. And I want you to think seriously about supporting this at all. I mean, if this is a state law, it's there for a reason. It's there to eliminate frivolous altercations. And as I was here last meeting, and it was a debacle, if I can use that word. So, think carefully. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Speewell?
Karen Speewell, Oz Good Road, speaking as a resident. First, I'd like to commend the residents who brought this vote and our council for working with them. I support the original motion as presented. As an elected official, I welcome, if anyone wants to take that up, that they should do it. I know the residents had researched it. And the other thing to think about is, this is not, just because the paperwork, again, has been submitted, you've got all your signatures, you're not automatically going to be recalled. And I would ask through the moderator to the town clerk to explain the second part of this, what actually happens, so people have a better understanding of the entire process.
Thank you. Our town clerk, if you could maybe summarize it. The process is a couple of pages long, but perhaps a succinct summary. While they're discussing that response, I'll ask you to share your comments.
Mike Mitchell, Berlin Game Road. I support the original motion because it gives the people who actually voted the power to say yea or nay, and it also gives incentive for more people to vote, which I would very, very much stress, people in this country are terrible about that. The more people that vote, the better. We are not even 10 percent voting. The more incentive people have to vote, the better.
Thank you for sharing that comment. Are you ready? I think Attorney Cosgrove will address Ms. Speewell's point.
Well, I hope I'm addressing it. The statute, the state, the special act that applies to Charlton is long.
Right into the mic, please.
Is long and detailed. I think your question goes to the portion that's in the warrant. Is that correct? So, now, the three-step process that they file an affidavit in order to get that, to get a petition. Then they get a petition, and you're debating about how many would have to pass that petition. And then there's an election. Those are the three steps. So, the majority of those eventually voting in the election would have to vote to recall, and if they did not, then the officer would not be recalled.
But through the moderator, I believe isn't there also an option that the person they're attempting to recall is made aware of the situation?
Oh.
And can they not say, can they not opt to resign?
I'm sure they can. Sure.
There are other parts to it, what I'm pointing out. And then there's the election again.
All right. Sir?
Rick McManus, 12 Curtis Hill Road. I think, Mike, the comment that I want to make is that we have a process established for dealing with unhappiness with who we elect, and that is regular elections. If you don't like who is in office, you can either run for office, you can support other people during the next election. I think that the process for having an election in the middle to recall somebody should have a very high bar because we have an established process for elections. So, this is a question of whether we should make it easier to increase the number of elections, essentially, because some people are upset in town. And I think that we have established elections for that exact express purpose, to remove people from office when you don't like how they're doing, you don't elect them again.
Thank you for sharing your views. Anything further to be said? Dr. Hatwick?
Robert Hatwick, 2 Freeman Road. And I don't object to the numbers part of this proposal too much. It just changes it from impossible to quite difficult. But I do have a problem with the documents, the affidavit and the petition containing a statement of the grounds for such a recall, because it seems to me that logically, these would just be the grievances of the people who wanted to do the recall, but there's no provision for a rebuttal by the person being recalled. So, I mean, we know that crazy rumors circulate around these days, and people are willing to believe them. One recently was that some of the selectmen didn't even live in town. So, I mean, I don't know if there was a recall petition with something like that, which was clearly untrue or libelous. It just seems to me wrong that there'd be no provision for fact-checking or rebuttal.
Thank you for raising your points. Mr. Proudy?
John Proudy, Patridge Hill Road. I just wanted to accentuate what is, I think, a little bit missing here. And we're talking about whether the threshold is too high or too low. The ultimate threshold that has to be crossed is what the outcome of the final vote of all of the voters would be. And keep that in mind, because if you have a frivolous or a flawed recall position, a petition, it'll be kicked asunder by the voters. Keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further to be said? Ms. Benjamin?
I would just like to remind everyone that all of these efforts to recall an elected official over something that's frivolous costs the taxpayers money. We end up having to go to the polls. We end up having to educate people. It takes a lot of time, and it takes money. And we shouldn't be held hostage by special interest groups that want to harangue people for votes that they don't like.
Thank you.
And if you take into consideration that 300 to 500 people are usually what goes to a main election, you're talking about less than 100 to maybe 150 people that can start a recall. I think that bar is way too low. And that's why I'm suggesting, if you have to make a bylaw about this, change the percentage.
I think you made that point earlier. Thank you. All right. We are, now, we're dealing with the amendment, all right? The amendment before us changes from 30 percent as presented in the article to 50 percent. So, that is our only question at this point. Are we to amend the article before us, moving from 30 percent to 50 percent? A majority vote in the affirmative is necessary for passage, and will, our numbers are low, but we can do a counted vote. All those in favor of amending this article, this motion, to be 50 percent rather than 30, please raise your voter registration card, and our counters will proceed. Yes?
With your indulgence, Bruins are down 2-0. Sorry. I didn't want you to leave yet. I just want to make sure.
It's not over till it's over.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. What are you trying to say? Don't hurry.
No, perhaps they need more people cheering them on. We'll do our best here. Article 28, those, again, this is the amendment, moving to 50 percent. Thank you. Pardon? Okay. And you folks got the stage?
19.
Thank you. All opposed by the same sign? The amendment to change from 30 percent to 50 percent passes by a vote of 72 to 35. Our next vote will now be on the main motion to accept Article 28 as amended, as printed and amended. All those in favor, please signify by raising your voter registration card. This is in favor of Article 28 as amended. Thank you. Article 28 passes as amended by a vote of 74 to 43. With the conclusion of our business, Mr. Meskis?
Madam Moderator, I move that we go home and cheer on the Bruins.
Meeting dissolved. Thank you very much.